Minutes. No entertain a motion to approve the February 24th if no one has any changes.
Jacob Mari, I move that we approve the February 24th meeting minutes.
Excuse me, sorry.
Christina Plort, second.
Okay, any discussion at this time? And we will do a roll call vote, so trying to get this, when you move the screen and moved all my little things around. So I will go through each member, Jacob. Griffin.
Hi.
Plort.
Hi.
Sophia.
Hi.
Rainey.
Hi.
Madhu.
Hi.
Dana.
Hi.
I as well, therefore, the minutes are as is, unchanged, unanimously. At this time, I would go to public participation and I would have the public have their thoughts and ideas. If you could please list your name and your address, you'll be given two minutes to discuss what you would like. And I will have Jacob be the timer since Tony is not here and he will visually give you a sign when you have 30 seconds left and also let you know verbally at this time, if any public would like to speak, if you could please raise your hand. Okay, going once, going twice. It's not sold to anybody, so we will continue on. We will go to correspondence, which we do not have, therefore, we will have to skip this section due to Tony not having that. So we will have to make up this, make my note that we will have to make up our correspondence for the March 10th meeting. We can go to points of information at this time, I would like to open it up to any board members. If they have anything in particular that they would like to say, you can raise your hand and we will go through that. Man, this is like a peanut gout, like just crickets, just crickets everywhere.
Just not seeing you all today.
Perfect, thank you, Madhu, nice seeing you as well, great teamwork. Okay, student representatives report, so let's go to Alexandra in Samar.
Hi, everyone, we don't have that much for tonight, but THS students did really well in the recent decade competition. Of the 40 students that competed, 25 received medals for being in the top six. And 19 of those 25 were in the top three for their category, which means they get to, they're qualified and they get to go to like the international competition. And then Samar.
Um, I don't have much except the end of year is kind of approaching and obviously we need to talk about senior activities. So there'll be an informational meeting for the parents with all the dates and stuff on March 25th at 6:00 PM. And that's it.
Okay, March 25th at 6:00 is the Parents for Seniors informational meeting.
Um, I think you should also find like other information like on the website such as the when class night will be and like graduation. Because Alexandra, where did you send me that?
I have that, so class night is currently set for June 4th and then class day. And the last ride thing is June 5th and then graduation is set for June 18th right now, I think. And that's all on the website for Toddler School.
Perfect, you got a nod from Dr. Willett with the 18th, so that looks like you're correct on that. And I know the other, um, other high school students are picking their courses for next year, so I know that that's going on. So, you know, there is a lot of stuff going on. Perfect, thank you guys so much. Okay, so then that brings us to the superintendent's report, so Dr. Willett.
We got there fast.
We got there very fast, I'm like, am I missing something? I'm like doubting myself.
My head is spinning here, okay. All right, so as usual, as you know, we do have the beginning of the month, we, our first meeting of the month. We do have monthly financial report. So standard financial report is accompanied with a letter from the business manager ultimately telling us roughly where we landed for this month, which is about one, sorry, the month of February, actually, last month, which is $1.1 million or 2.8%, of the Board of Ed's current budget. Also included with the monthly financial report is the rundown of the, you know, the budget and count areas that we typically include for Board of Education review. And I will give you a basic rundown of some of the bigger considerations within this. Salaries are currently under budget, additional hiring, you know, this year with COVID, we just haven't been able to hire all the people that normally you would have. And that has caused obviously struggles and, you know, we've been doing a great job, you know, addressing those issues. But that has resulted in an available balance, you know, of about 400,000 for this time of year. We are hiring, we're adding the two custodians that I had talked about a little bit prior as we move into the five days to do the, we need to keep us in compliance with health district standards and all of that kind of thing. So we also brought on some educational, what we call remote learning education or remote learning assisted educators, so they're coming in to help out with the remote learning populations and things like that. So while we do have a available balance here, we are adding COVID-related staff for this year that, you know, that probably will not be continuing forever and ever, but we should impact that balance by the end of the year as well. Substitutes, just again, not as many people wanting to come in, so we're using more permanent substitutes. Right now, the available balance is about 134,000, it's dropped by 93,000 from last month. So, you know, we are going to be heading in the direction of seeing adjustments that balance out some of those lines that have been carrying, you know, a balance for a little while. Also, you know, we are now in the stage of entering the final stage of the year with respect to sports, other activities. So we're bringing in temporary AP to cover some bases while we begin the final process of interviewing for the assistant principal. You may recall last year, we had the athletic director step in and basically do both roles. Now, since it looks like a sport season in the spring is going to be a full sport season, need a little help, you know, in this period of time of adjustment as we look to do the process and begin to place an assistant principal at the high school. Overtime expenses, they cannot really be encumbered, but they're currently under budget about 65,000. That's down a little bit last month by 14, because we just ended up not having as many, you know, issues. But we are going to probably be needing to make some adjustments in the next few months to make sure, again, we're in compliance as we have five days going, we do want to make sure those rooms are clean, that kind of thing. And sometimes that does require overtime in addition to the staff that we have and have employed. Stipends are, stipends are currently over budget. And we talked about this in the past, a couple of months, the pay-to-play, you know, we got reduced participation, reduced, you know, reduced income from that this year. But if we do have a full sport season with a full schedule with all the conference meets and everything, we will be, we will be charging the full amount for, for pay-to-play if we're having a full season. The reason we hadn't done that is the season was really not a full season and it was not really fair. But at this point, it looks like spring will be, so if spring season is a full season with everything, we will be charging the typical amount, which should balance out that a little bit, but we are negative right now. Um. Health insurance, severance, employee benefits, again, under budget because of some staff that, you know, that did leave and that we hired, but there was a differential time. So there were some funds there, newly employer employee, newly hired employees and things like that also affected those other lines like FICA. You know, other people that are retiring or retired since the beginning of the year, because we did have people decide that this was the year they were going to retire, they'd had it and they were out. So that left a little bit of an available balance there at this point. We do see people filing in for course reimbursements, they, they don't actually get those until they finish. So we'll see some of that line getting adjusted. Benefits consultants and workers remain on target. Legal audit and technical services are all about under budget by 35,000, but we are in the middle of negotiations. The number is down by 41,000 from last month, so you can see that, you know, we're probably heading in a direction of, of using that or even a bit more. Secretary Union negotiations have already started and, you know, we're going to see some expenses hit those lines. All repairs, maintenance, custodial, cleaning, equipment, technical, they continue to be spent down as the year goes on, which is pretty typical. Maintenance and custodial expenses typically are cyclical, they don't always get fully incurred until the end of the year. So we'll see that come and adjust appropriately. And, you know, as you might imagine, there is a slight increase here as we deal with COVID. Student transportation is under budget in February. This does fluctuate because you can have, you know, have some kids needing services and then not needing services and needing services. So that goes sometimes higher, sometimes lower, but in this case, it's under budget and by about 15,000. And barring any major issues, it should level out now, but between now and the end of the year, knock on wood, it should level out and we should see massive fluctuations there. Special ed tuitions are under budget, we've hit that eighth month of the year. And, you know, there's always, it's not, it's not possible to predict that with 100% certainty. But it's a pretty, it's a good thing that we're under budget at the eighth month of the year, that's not, that's a pretty good thing at this point. State troopers for public events and public safety, we took a break from that because during the pandemic, nobody was having anything. So that, that is under budget by about 84, but we are going to perhaps have some things happen in the latter part of the year. So that will be drawn down upon to some extent. Energy expenses, as you know, are transferred as of Yusef. We have a pilot that's completing in math in the next few months, and so there will be an expenditure on text and other things as soon as it is complete, right now, they're, they're between three different programs that they're trying to decide from. So that should be spent once that is completed. And supplies miscellaneous, general, right about where you'd expect them to be. New instructional equipment line is over by about 187, but again, that has to do with the computers. We still don't have the ERF reimbursement, but that is coming and that'll balance out that line. It is down by about 45,000. Most of it is due to the purchases of those units. If you're aware, I think that is pretty much. Pretty much it for this one. If I have any questions, I can record them and see if I can come back with some answers.
Okay, perfect, so at this time, I'd like to open it up to board members for questions, so let's go to Jacob.
Thank you, Dr. Willett, I had a couple of questions about two different lines. One was the substitutes line that you touched on a little bit, I just, like you mentioned, it's down quite a bit. I didn't know if there's going to be, I want to get your opinion to see if you thought there might be a deficit up on that line this year. Normal to see that big of a drop between January and February or?
Yeah, it's really hard to predict because some of the people that we might use, like permanent people, permanent subs, so to speak, to cover. We do have more subs signing up right now. In the last part of the year, they seem to be feeling better about the situation. So they do seem to be coming in greater numbers and we do, we are expending that. But I would say that I still think we will probably end up with a little bit there. I'm not worried about the sub line, I think we'll probably end the year okay.
Okay, and thank you, and the second question was about the general supplies, the account 600 towards the bottom there. That one also saw a big drop, I think there's a balance of 0.5%, I think it was up, it was 57% was the balance in January. I didn't know if that was kind of like a, you purchase everything up in February or something and it drops down quite a bit or if that should be, we should expect that to go negative too.
Yeah, that, this is the time when, when they do start, you know, it often starts off a bit slow with that line and then it picks up pretty dramatically as the year goes on. And as we get towards the end, people are, you know, this, these supplies are generally incurred once people realize, you know, they start burning through what they had and now they actually need now. Sometimes they'll have a little bit left over, so it's slow and then it picks up pretty quick.
Okay, buy everything before the school year starts and then you gotta.
And then you have it for a while and then, yeah, then you hit a lull and then now they, now all those fences are burned and they gotta go get some more, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's go to Plort.
Thanks, Ashley. I just had a question on professional education services, forgive me if you already went through that line. It just looks like there's a big encumbrance for this report and it's over budget, is that? Were those COVID-related or, I don't know, I guess, what's the story there?
Let's see, professional ed services, which line, give me a line number, I'm sorry.
Oh, 320.
Um. I will, I'll have to look at why it fluctuated that much.
Okay.
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure, but I'll, I'll look at that, I'll get back to you. Trying to think off the top of my head, what was incurred, oh. So I'm gonna just, just gonna make a quick guess, but we usually spend money on certain training programs and things and then we will receive the excess cost payment. My guess is when we get that reimbursement, that line balances right out.
Okay.
That's what I'm thinking is happening for that one, because we do probably use that and push back against that line.
Awesome, thank you, and then one other, I guess, really a comment, not a question. When you guys are in FFC and forgive me for not being on all those meetings, are you keeping track of all the expenses that are related to COVID? I know we can't anticipate funds from the state or the federal government, but if we have everything all documented and can submit for whatever it is that we could submit for, is that something that you guys have ready?
We, we definitely do have that list of things and Christine Griffin, who's the chair, as you know, you know, always is on top of that and asking about it. So we regularly talk about that figure, I think we're, we're hovering in that 200,000 something zone that's been expended, but, um, we, we definitely are and we have a, you know, we have all of that for, for the different grants, frankly, now, where we are able, we were at 283 and one of the grants picked up some of it, so it went a little bit closer down to 200, but then there's other expenses, so it's kind of going up and down a bit, but, you know, but we are, we know exactly what those items are and we're pushing off as many as we can to grants.
Awesome, thank you, I'm all set, Ash.
And that was my question, so there you go, perfect. Griffin, you have your hand up.
I'll, I'll just tell you all that, um, yes, I'm working on the agenda for next week and it's already on there. So just to let you know, we'll, we'll review it again next week and kind of talk about where we are in the grants and what else we have going on, so thank you.
Perfect, thank you very much for that update. Okay, this is just seems so like, we're just going, we're going for everything.
Oh, it's amazing.
So let's go to our H2, the five-day in-person plan and the COVID update.
Okay, so, um, as you know, I did do a community workshop the other day and I did a faculty forum. You know, and we do through a series of meetings, many meetings a week and then Friday culminating meetings with all the stakeholders all throughout the month. And so as we were approaching, this, this conversation has been happening for some time, you know, looking to move the district to the five-day in-person model. And, you know, we are arriving at that now, registration closes in about five days. And we've noticed a little fluctuation in remote learning populations, but not much, that's holding somewhat stable now at about 300, somewhere in that zone, 290, 300 at this point. So, you know, with five days left to change a registration cycle and having been, been open for 10 days already, I don't think we're, we're going to get too much more of a fluctuation there. So we'll probably settle in at the end of this month, March 29th, when we go five-day with about 300 remote learners still remaining remote. The, the process was one that included many stakeholders, the, the constant input of the health district, you know, taking into account our efforts and our contact tracing efforts or prevalence and into account, um, you know, all of the, the people that would inform that, both teachers and paraprofessionals and their readiness and, uh, you know, the transportation, obviously, and administration and medical personnel. So the culmination of all of that was the five-day in-person plan that was laid out last week. By the pandemic continuity of learning plan, it needs to be put out to the community by March 3rd. And so it was, it was put out, I think, March 2nd and then it was an update March 3rd. So all information was put out about March 2nd or March 3rd. So these links, just to give a quick, you know, kind of tour of the links. Just, just real quick, Christina, can you see what I just threw up there? Did I, did you, is this, let's see, making sure, this is five-day to?
Very small. TPS five-day.
Five-day to.
Info doc posted three, four.
All right, good, that, so let me try to expand that. So these are the documents that were made available last week. You know, just kind of go through them really quick. The first was describing the, you know, the options that people could register for. And so starting the 29th, you know, one could just let that four-day in-person roll to five-day or they could be a remote learner. Those who have exceptions for various reasons that are medical or some other kind, you know, are still in force. So as of the 29th, people will have either chosen to roll their four-day to five-day, be remote or they'll continue with an exception that they had previously been granted. At that point on March 29th, on the right-hand side in blue, this is what the choices are. You know, you're either remote or you're five-day and again, people are exceptions, can be exceptions. So it has the continuation of the early release days as we talked about on Wednesdays and mostly in a truncated form, I tried to provide a one-pager, which actually ended up being, you know, a little bit more than a one-pager of a Q and A and more information as to the, the whys behind it. So, you know, essentially it's balancing out, there was time lost with the day going to be in-person on Wednesday, that time was no longer available for individual work sessions for small groups or for one-to-one. And with 300 remote learners, you know, teachers obviously still need to be able to balance those populations, be able to make lessons, they're quality lessons, because it's not just time, it's also quality. You know, they, they aren't going to and wouldn't be able to put something together that was, you know, the quality that they, they wanted and that would provide a good educational experience unless they had the time to do so. So it kind of talks about and gives an rationale for why the approach was taken that was getting everybody in those Wednesdays, making it synchronous, so even if you are a remote learner, you're actually getting synchronous instruction now on the Wednesdays because that time is now lost on Wednesday halfway, the doubt on the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. And provide sufficient time for cleaning on the facilities, one of the big things we kept hearing is, you know, we'll come, you know, we, we will consider sending our children back, but not if you start skimping on the cleaning. You know, you need to keep up the same kind of thing that you, you were doing before. And so this does not sacrifice that, you know, as we were going through the meetings, it was clear what was needed both with respect to teacher time and cleanly facilities, things like that. And so this kept that going, so there, there is no change in that, we'll still have the same kind of deep cleaning activities. And I think because of that, we did pick up four, 40 more remote people. You know, without that, I don't think we would have had it. So again, it's about people feeling more and more comfortable as time goes on, coming back. And the more in-person people we have, the less remote learners we have, the fewer complications we have in terms of splitting things. And, you know, we can move forward even more, the more people that are coming back. So we did pick up about 40 more and it had a lot to do with people's feeling confident that we were continuing in a, in a way that they felt showed safety and rationale, rationality with respect to what's going on. So, um, also, you know, the IAP PPT 504, all of these types of meetings occurring had to, you know, be considered with respect to timing. In addition, if we're not able to support the learners the way we need to, they typical, typically become referrals to intervention or special education, which then has its own special overwhelming effect when numbers, you know, begin to, to go higher and higher with those populations or people looking for, you know, looking to be classified in that way. So it's important that, you know, that, that support for our students isn't sacrificed in any, in any direction because, you know, to have, to drop the ball on that, to not provide appropriate supports, to not provide the teachers the time to have planning and be able to manage the populations appropriately, to not have the follow-up time, say 2:45 at this point for those populations, for those teachers to, to do those small groups and to follow up with those individuals, to not have that ends up turning into, you know, referrals, manifestations, things like that. And that has a very detrimental effect both for kids and for the district overall, if that's happening in larger numbers, which it tends to do when those populations are not adequately supported. So it's balancing many, many different dynamics and doing a great job of, of keeping things within balance and making sure that, you know, the bases are covered. And also with respect to why, you know, this also had information about why we didn't just bring in remote teaching staff. I won't read the whole thing verbatim, but there were many, many reasons why that was not going to be something that would work for our district. We're not big enough to have just staff that we could reassign without hurting other populations. And there just isn't also a market out there, there's just not a lot of people. Right now, we're down employees as it is, there aren't people knocking at the doors to be brought in. And even though the state did allow for exceptions, what that meant was you could literally put almost anyone in a classroom, frankly, and, and again, that goes back to quality. You know, you can have 60 minutes with an untrained person who's really green or 40 minutes with somebody who's really well-trained and not green, and it does make a difference. People that know their craft and are, are used to doing it. You know, teachers with the certifications, with the training, they can keep that, that going, you know, that, they make, they make the class week to week actually mean something. And I'm not saying that other people can't possibly do that, but, you know, those that, that are not as well-trained or if we start watering down, you know, certifications and start throwing people in there who really don't know physics, they really don't know calculus, don't know these things, they really aren't teaching it. You got a body in there, but you don't have a class. So, um, so these are things that we took into account and took very seriously. And we, we have in this district, you know, kept them in front of certified teachers that, that know their jobs and know their craft. And, you know, they're, they're, and they're helping all of the populations. And we do have the, you know, assistant now and assistant educators coming in, providing additional support. So we do expect the end of the year for kids to, to really be seeing a lot of recovery, you know, building back out from what COVID created. But, you know, as we move forward, we want to try to encourage people to feel comfortable coming back. And this plan does that, it's, it provides, provides the teachers enough time to do the job that we all know they need to do. And it keeps the district moving in the right direction, it starts eliminating, removing asynchronous learning, replacing it with synchronous learning, gets kids in front of teachers and staff every single day. And it maintains all the cleaning and all the necessary protocols that the health district requires and it's helping us bring people back. So I think we do have people that are watching, you know, that about 300 is, as far as I can tell in the conversations, you know, they want to just see how it goes. And I think as they see it progressing well and being managed well and with the appropriate mitigation still in place, I, I really do feel strongly that more and more of that remote population will, will return. And so in the pandemic plan, it does have an asterix on the, this particular education period. And, you know, again, we're watching it and as things change, who knows, maybe something could change here too again, you know, in terms of making sure that we get even more time. But right now, this is, this is where we're at. This is extending through the next, you know, pandemic education period into May and then assess the situation at that point, which I'm very optimistic about. So we'll see how it pans out, but we are in a very good direction. Some people have brought up the variants and they're very concerned about the variants. Right now, you know, we've done a great job of mitigating for those and so that's another reason why PPE will not go away. We will have PPE all year long, it will be with us and rightfully so. And PPE does do a good job of, of, you know, mitigating that spread. So, you know, we, we're still in a very good place with respect to that as well. And, you know, we'll keep up those efforts all year long as well as the cleaning and other things too. So, so that's where we're at, just as a basic overview, trying not to go on and on about that, but that information is available on the superintendent's bullet, I'm sorry, superintendent bulletin page off the website and it has all of the info as well as all the past info too, it's, you can almost see the entire landscape of the year. You're like that, and I think we're doing very, very well, you know, with respect to, you know, some of the comparison out there and so on. And I think the district has been all, for many, many months, one of the districts that actually has had more in-person than most, you know, whereas a lot of the populations out there in other health districts, you know, we, we have a great health district, it's small, but it's great. It's small, but it's great. And, you know, they were two days a week for half their entire populations, and, you know, we've been poor for a long time. So, moving to five is the, is the next logical step. And we remain in the state of Connecticut as one of the school districts that has been in-person, you know, with the majority of its population for, you know, for the most of the time. So it's, it's a continuing of that effort as well.
Yeah, thank you very much, Dr. Will. I know a lot of planning goes into this, and I do know the teachers appreciate having that extra time for the remote learners, because it is hard to get everything on Google Docs and get everything set for even if it's just one child per classroom, that they have to get prepared to have them be integrated into their class. So I do know that they appreciate that, and I just want to see our kid back to school. So it is great to see that. Let's open it up to Madhu.
Thank you. I did just have a quick question. Do we envision a scenario in which we can resume full days? Or is it really going to be dependent on the amount of online or remote learners that we have?
I would love to see us move to a point where we can have full days, with the exception of Wednesdays, being very frank. You know, I think if the state of Connecticut's situation is moving in a certain direction, and I think if our remote populations are moving in a certain direction, if our teachers are able to execute quality instruction, and those populations get a little bit more balanced out, then I, I could see maybe, you know, the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, in collaboration with staff and everything else, maybe pushing back again to, to a more normal schedule. But Wednesdays, I don't see us getting, you know, changing the half-day Wednesdays throughout the rest of this year. I think the half-day Wednesdays will remain with us, simply because, you know, there is a tremendous amount of planning and a lot of PPT five oh four, IEP special program considerations, some extra time, many meetings that are support meetings, all of those things are, or many of them are concentrated in those Wednesdays. And so, you know, we don't, nobody wanted to be in the pandemic, but to not make adjustments or provide time for the pandemic would be just denying that it exists, you know. So, while I do think we can make some adjustments, and I'm very optimistic, you know, as we move forward, I don't see Wednesday, I see that early release staying where it is, people in person, but I do see Wednesday staying there. The other days.
The question was more driven towards Tuesday, or Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, like, yeah, Wednesdays, I understand.
Yeah, and I think we, that's a, it's a possibility as we go later into the year. We just have to make sure that everybody felt like they could adequately support the students, you know, and do the best job possible supporting them. And right now, teachers, they, they really need that time right now, so they can serve the students. But, yeah, it's, I'm optimistic and we'll see what happens with that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Madhu. Let's go to Jacob.
It's Dr. Will for the update. I just have one question, and I apologize if it was written down somewhere and I missed it, but the current period is extended. I was just kind of curious what the rationale was to extend the period, I think till, is it March twenty-sixth?
Yeah, it's because we needed the time. Not only the vaccination efforts, we needed to be able to execute those, but we needed the time to make the adjustments necessary in, in some of the scheduling and populations. It just, it, it wasn't going to happen responsibly sooner than the twenty-sixth. So, giving to the twenty-sixth really allowed those individuals that needed to make adjustments in the program and reschedule things and change when needed to be changed, effectively do so. Especially some of the teacher planning time, that has been the number one thing that has been made very, very clear, is that, you know, if we're going to be doing that work, and we're going to be doing it correctly and well, that the teachers need that time. So making those modifications does take a little bit of time as well, because they have to restructure everything, get pairs realigned, get UAs realigned, so that they can change the end of the day appropriately. So that did take some planning and time, and rather than, you know, try to do it too fast and mess it all up, we just needed to make sure we had enough time to execute that properly.
Okay, do it right the first time sort of attitude. All right.
Right.
Let's go to Dana next.
Can you hear me? First of all, thank you, Dr. Will, for the detailed explanation about your plan. I do know that, I understand that knowledge is power, and, and I know that when it first rolled out, there was some tremendous amount of concern in regards to the five day, just the changes in the schedule overall, as Madhu was mentioning, the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. You know, I know that the goal has always been to get in five days and get our students in front of our educators, because that's going to be the best process for absorbing the, the curriculum and their education. And I know all the teachers, everybody wants to be back in school and they want to be back in a normal environment. Unfortunately, we're not in a normal environment still. Although I respectfully appreciate your drive and my peers' drive to get to five days. I know that several folks have been very vocal in regards to their goal of getting in five days. I think it disrupts a lot, unfortunately. And it disrupts a lot, not only the remote learners, but our in-person learners and folks. It changes not just the Wednesday, but it changes all five days. So, and I know that a lot of folks have struggled to work on, you know, finding suitable folks to be with their children on Wednesdays who are in school. And I don't want to, you know, so now having the early release days has been a concern across the board. Just, just a quick view on a remote learner's day. They are online, they are engaging with their classmates, they are engaging with their educators in, in the synchronous learning. On a Wednesday, the concerning aspect is, on a Wednesday, they can start a Google meets as early as nine AM and can go all the way till noon. Those remote learners are getting one-on-one time, or two-on-one time, or three-on-one time with their other remote learners and their educators, including their parents, including their, you know, special educators, math interventionists, reading interventionists, so on and so forth. My concern with the fact that they are doing the early releases, it's fifteen or twenty minutes at maximum, although it may be thirty minutes of the school day, the last fifteen minutes of the day typically is pack up your backpack, get your water bottles, pack your lunchbox, and shuffle them to the bus. So the actual curriculum time is probably fifteen minutes. And although that you've opened up that space for educators to meet with our online learners, the last fifteen minutes of the day or so, imagine these folks being online all day, staring at a screen, whether they have their blue light glasses on or not. Having that one-on-one time after being exhausted in class all day, I don't necessarily know how impactful that time would be. I don't think it replaces the impact that the pairs and the educators are doing with that time on Wednesdays. Some of our pairs and educators have one-on-one, some of them have groups where all of the, all of the remote learners can join the class and talk about a specific subject, subject that they're struggling with, a specific topic or a specific project. And the, and the higher grades, they have different teachers on, and kids, students and young adults can, can jump on and, and work with their educators. The other concern that I had about losing those Wednesdays is the fact that we're increasing our spend through our budget with hiring additional janitorial staff to maintain the standard that Mr. Saba and his team have already executed through COVID. And I'm grateful for the team for doing that, but now we are spending budget money to add additional hires to ensure that we can work around the schedule and maintain a sanitary, or sanitize, let's say it's a, sanitized for per COVID protocols. And then, one of the biggest things that I've heard a lot of our educators and a lot of our administrators talk about is the mental health of our educators. Again, every educator wants their students in class, every educator wants to be in five days, every student and every parent wants their students in five days, in a normal umbrella. Right now, it is not. We're expecting a lot out of educators on both facets, and you'll have some will say that we want five days in no matter what, and there are some say that they really need a detrimental, that mental break, especially on those Wednesdays, when they can sit back and meet with those folks, those, those students one-on-one. They can meet with their peers to really devise a plan of their curriculum or how they're going to handle being a teacher in three different aspects. And I, I don't know how our educators are doing it, I don't know how our pairs are doing it, I don't know how our administration is doing it. But I do worry about their mental health. I worry about the students' mental health, but I do worry, we need to make sure that we're cognizant of our educators. And I get concerned that, that doing it at the end of the day might not afford them the opportunity to have the, the necessary time to really utilize their resources appropriately. And I just wanted to kind of give some folks who aren't in the remote category, an eye or a vision or a lens of what a remote student looks at and receives. And respectfully, Dr. Will, I am so appreciative of all the administrators, all the faculty, all the staff, for everything that they've done and they continue to do, because they're beyond phenomenal. But I just wanted to make sure that you, you knew, you knew my concerns. You've always known my concerns. I think everybody's always known that we definitely need to make sure that we're taking care of the large population that is still remote. And we are taking care of our folks that are, you know, our educators and our administrators are taking care of our students, as well as yourself, Dr. Will. So, again, I appreciate the plan, I appreciate the goal of what we're doing. I just would be remiss if I didn't mention my concerns. And that's what I have for now. Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you, Dana. Dr. Will, did you want to answer or wait to go through everyone?
No, I, a brief answer. I mean, I respect it totally. The only thing I would add, because I don't want to take away from, you know, people's sense of things. Every family knows what they need and what they express makes sense to me. You know, for me, I'm always just trying to find the balance, the best way forward. And so, the only thing I would say is, I really do feel that on those Wednesdays, for those remote learners, the synchronous learning they're going to get versus the asynchronous is, is a worthwhile, you know, those hours are worthwhile, those four, so, you know, hours plus are worthwhile. And then after that, they, they get that contact in the small groups. They get this one-to-one, you know, in that Wednesday, and then, and then Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday, they get that in those smaller, smaller time spans, but again, they're still getting it. So I, I think it's a really good balance of getting people back in front of teachers, seeing those teachers, seeing them every day, seeing their faces, hearing their voices, getting interaction directly with them, whether they're in person or a remote. And so that's, that's the goal. But, but again, I deeply respect and understand where Ms. Philbin's coming from and others that say, you know, I'm really concerned that the, the children are getting the appropriate, you know, help and attention. And, you know, if they're not, then they, then they could have exacerbating and compounding struggles in the future that aren't good for them or the school district or anyone. So, we know, we're working very hard to, to provide those services in the right balance. And I really appreciate the opportunity to do that, and thank you for your patience, yours and everyone's.
And Dr. Will, just quickly, I do, I know that you have been thorough and thoughtful, and there's absolutely no way that you're willing to please everyone and anyone, or any of it. But I definitely just wanted to make sure that I expressed my concerns.
Thank you, Dana. Let's go to Sophia.
Dr. Will, I have a question regarding the remote learning. Do you think there's any plan in the future that we won't need it? Like, is that on the horizon? Is anybody talking about that? Not just you internally within our district, but overwhelming, maybe perhaps in Connecticut. Do you think we're going to be, have to offer this in the fall? I understand it's, you know, a strain, like you said, it's a perfect balance, right? We have to balance the remote learners and the in-person learners. And I'm just thinking that when that remote learning option doesn't have to be, does have to be available, and I'm not saying when that should be, but, or if it would be, that would help alleviate that strain. So that's, that was just I was wondering, is there any hope on the horizon we won't have to offer the remote learning?
That's a good question, and many have wondered that. I think the last I heard from Governor Lamont, when there was a conference on it, was that there is an intention to have this option available into next year. However, subsequent to that, and in other meetings, I have, I, I sense that, because no one's made a final decision yet, but I sense that the direction this is going in, from what I can gather in those meetings, is that, you know, if it is going into next year, what it looks like that provision or allowance might, there will be conditions. So for instance, it may be that if a child has a certain level of, you know, of compounding or, you know, medical or other kinds of issues that would compromise their health, make it unsafe, that they would supply paperwork to a school's, you know, central or nurse's office, and they would be processed as, as a student allowed to engage in remote learning. So I think there will be conditions on it in the future. Right now, it's pretty, it's pretty much open to just anyone. There's absolutely no restriction, and a parent can invoke that almost, you know, immediately in any sense, in any sense. So that's against what the laws used to be. The laws used to say, you know, students under sixteen who are not withdrawn for homeschooling must be in school. And so I think they're heading back in the direction of that. But I do think they'll allow some provision for remote learners under certain conditions. And so I think that population will be much, much smaller come September of next year. The only thing I can see changing that is if something greatly changed in the trajectory of the virus in the next five months. But if we keep on the course of what's happening and the vaccines are, you know, proving to be as effective as they seem to be, then I think we, we can expect a much more normal year next year. You know, not many scheduled disruptions or changes, and those who are remote will be, you know, will be in a special condition. They will, they will, they will qualify under certain conditions for it. And so, it would not be a big population the way it is now. But I don't have a crystal ball, so that's my guess. That is as of seven forty-nine PM on March tenth, that I am, you know, I want to put a little note on that. As far as I can tell right now, you know.
I, I know, I was calling you out to be an oracle for all of us.
Yeah, I don't want someone to replay that to me like sometime in August, but I do think, I do think that we're headed that way.
Thank you, Dr. Will. Sophia, you're all set? See, you're off. Okay, um, Florida's next.
So, similar idea to what Sophia just asked. You know, I'd like to thank Dr. Will for finding the balance, and actually thank Dana for making me think differently about the remote learning population. We had a conversation about this in our, our COVID meeting last week or the week before. And my thought on the remote learning process, if that's to continue next year, let's say it continues status quo, God forbid. It's really unfair to the students and the teachers to have to bounce back and forth between remote learners and in-person learners, because it, it's proven that both models can work for, for different families and what they're struggling with or what they're going through. So just, you know, if we don't have the crystal ball, you know, to see what's going to happen, maybe just anticipating that. If this does continue, you know, we may have to look at, at staffing to handle the different populations. And that would alleviate the stress of the in-person learning, but also give the remote learners that, that valuable time.
Yeah, and it's easier with smaller populations to do that. So it may, you know, I think I do, I do feel very optimistic about next year. Yeah, and, and the end of this year.
I feel like we're turning a corner. You know, it's my hope that, you know, the kids aren't going to have to quarantine, you know, for fourteen days after, you know, we return immunity and, and there's different things, you know, that we're progressing to a new normal, nothing is ever going to be the same again. But, you know, we're moving forward, and thanks, Dr. Will, for pushing us in that direction.
Couple of quick notes for parents. Right now, sixteen and seventeen-year-olds can get Pfizer. They can, I mean, once their age group opens, but if they're in special grouping, some may work in a, in what's called a, you know, core critical work area. So sixteen and seventeen-year-olds can get Pfizer, but the others are not authorized for young, for kids yet. So sometime in July, they're looking to have approval for more of these for younger ages. But currently, the only one that a young person can have is Pfizer, and there are none younger than sixteen. So sometime in July, that should change, and that will also change the trajectory a bit too. Because that'll stop what Ms. Plort is referring to. Even though all the teachers, you know, most of us will be vaccinated, teachers will be vaccinated, that type of thing. In our age group, even fifty-five and older and others will be vaccinated, the children will be still quarantining throughout the remainder of this year as if they're COVID positive because they are not vaccinated. So teachers won't have to go out, but kids will. So that one little piece, just so people kind of understand, we will still have to quarantine kids all the way through the end of this year. But hopefully, that will change dramatically in the summer. And we will start next year, as Ms. Plort says, you know, with a much different picture without having to do these mass quarantines.
I'm assuming, just to kind of follow up with this, coming, going back to school and having all the students, I mean, are we still going to use the classroom outside and kind of still do those kind of operations, just, you know?
Yeah, we're even more equipped to do that now because we did get the grants for the laptops and the Wi-Fi units outside. And so now a teacher can take her, take his, her, or her or his class outside, and the remote learners can go with them. Whereas before, they were kind of tethered because they they couldn't, they didn't have the tech. So we do have that now. I do expect that in the final months of this year, starting, you know, now with the good weather and things like that, we'll start to see soon as the mush goes away and they're not sinking into the, into the ground when they sit, I think we'll see a lot more outside things going on, a lot more outside classes.
Like a field trip.
Remember those? I remember those. Those were awesome.
Those were fun.
Yes, I love field trips. We gotta have to get those back.
No, that's perfect. Thank you very much, Dr. Willett. I know a lot goes into it, and I do thank you for your time and talking to admins and everything else. It's a lot. And I think it is a good way to start getting everybody because what is normal? I don't know what normal is going to be, like you were saying, Plort. I, you don't know. You don't know what a new normal is going to be. We really don't. So I think that we're approaching it the best that we can and gotta take the steps to do it. So thank you very much.
Sure.
Let's go to each three, the finance and facilities, one-page summary.
Sorry, your screen is going to get all jumbled up again. My apologies.
I don't know. Christine, you would like to give us the rundown since this was an FFC put together?
So just a little background, just to make sure that all the board is aware. So I kind of jumped on to the communication meeting. I think it was last Monday. And we kind of talked about some things and we thought it might make sense to do a kind of a summary synopsis of the budget after the joint meeting that probably could have gone a little differently. But we thought that maybe having a summary that had actual budget numbers, some explanations, percentages, totals, and kind of just highlight what things that we as a board, either in committee or as a board as a whole, kind of the questions that we asked to get the town council to maybe have a little bit more background. So what we did is I kind of put together an outline, if you will, before the special meeting last Thursday. And then the committee kind of expanded on it and we went through. And basically, this is what we came up with that the whole board will see tonight that we're sending to the council, which will hopefully answer some of their questions. And it is important to note that this was before the town manager's proposed budget that went to that's going to the council that did reduce our budget by the two hundred, I think it was two ninety-five thousand. So this is based on our original budget ask. So we just, like I said, we just kind of highlighted things that we thought were important that might give the council a little bit of background so that they kind of understood where we were coming from.
Thank you very much. I know it's silly, like you were going to send it to the town council, but yeah, it's in our board packet, so. It seems kind of silly that we're.
We did realize that, you know, that, you know, they firmly can see it if if they wanted to beforehand, but this is, yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you. Madhu?
Um, thank you. I just, I did have a quick question. Now that, you know, we know the, what's in the town manager's budget has been reduced. Do we, and again, I'm new, so I don't know how the process really works, but are we still advocating for the three point one nine percent? I don't know who, I don't know who answers that.
I'm not sure how that works exactly.
You know, I can, I can say that typically what happens in the budget process here is when the town manager, you know, does her or his job and then goes through the whole piece, you know, budget, looks at everything across the town and recommends one. Chances are that recommended budget heading to the town council. I would just probably venture to say it's probably not going up from there. I think he's making a, you know, he's doing the best he can to balance a lot of things. So they will likely hear that from him. My, I doubt that they would probably go higher than that. But when the manager sets that and then the town council eventually approves it, that becomes the the budget, you know? And that's that. So right now, that's what we'll be watching the town council do is kind of deliberate over the manager's budget, much like when I present superintendent's proposed budget. You see, it's a very mirrored situation. The board really does that function with the superintendent for its own budget. That's why it's so well-vetted when it gets there. I propose the superintendent's proposed budget to the board, much like he presents his town manager's budget to the town council. They'll do the same things you did. They'll, you know, be, you know, kind of go through it, ask lots of questions, kind of do those things. And then at the end of the day, what they set is what they set, and that's, that's it. So that's where the towns and town councils authority is, is in, in the setting of that budget and determining what the, you know, community can afford. And so probably will not go up from there would be my guess.
Okay, so are we going to redo this or do we know what we're going to have to adjust in our proposed budget or?
What typically happens is once we do get a final budget that the council has decided on, I start to release these documents. There are about two to three phases left in the year or blocks of time left. And working through FFC and then ultimately to the board, I present to the board these documents that lay out a series of choices the board can make about how it wants to adjust to what we have been handed. So it'll have recommendations, but there'll be a series of things to choose from. And if anyone wants to see what that looks like, it was released last year. It was called the Phase One, Two, and Three Documents. It's still on the budget page from last year. It's at the bottom under older documents. But it helps the board to get a really good idea of what we have for resources and then helps the board make some determinations about how to leverage those resources towards the end of the year and what reductions need to be made to the, to the budget. And, you know, those, those options are made available to the board and then the board kind of chooses which ones it wants to pick.
Okay, and then the last.
Sorry, Madhu. I just wanted to add when you asked if we're going to redo this. I, I think the plan now would be to leave it as is because regardless, like we still, we don't want the town council to reduce, I guess, anymore from what the town manager has already. So if we can kind of submit this document and they can at least get on board with kind of what we've presented here, you know, I think the hope would be that they'll at least pass the number that Mr. Rosen has suggested. So we're just going to leave this as.
Okay. And I, and I know the, the goal of this is to be as least less verbose as humanly possible, but would it, would it, do we think it's worth it to add in the explanations for the reasons for the new positions, for those new salaries?
I think Ms. Griffin's goal was to go with a one-pager because this, this has quickly become the Board of Ed adopted budget. As we added the narratives, it actually starts to do that, like, you know.
Red, red.
So that's actually probably the introduction to the Board of Ed adopted budget is, is the narrative, you know, expression probably of most of that.
That's what I was just going to say.
Okay, and if they want to get more granular detail, they can come to you, correct?
Oh, yeah, yeah. And, you know, we are, we are, I am scheduled. One of the things that happens over the next few weeks, March sixteenth, they do schedule the, or in the past, they have scheduled the superintendent to come to the town council. So that is something that's been part of the past and is also part of this year. Sometimes they say, don't worry about it. Other times they say, yep, come. And I believe we're in a yep, come year.
Okay, all right. And I just want to say thank you for, to everyone on FFC, Christine, Sophia, Dana, everyone for their work and Dr. Willett. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madhu. Just to reiterate, the March sixteenth is the town council meeting where they would like you to attend to discuss the.
Yep.
Okay, so just in case any other board members would like to make any parents for the March sixteenth meeting for town council, just mark that onto your calendar. Okay, and let's go to Jacob.
Yeah, just to build on what Christine said, I was really happy that we came up with this document. I think it was a really good idea. Just to give an overview of things, I think even with the town manager's proposal, the really nice thing about this document is it highlights, you know, what was in that three point one nine percent and, you know, what what's at stake here with this budget. And going forward, you know, and this is just an open proposal. We obviously have time because we won't be doing this again for another year, but I would really like to see maybe FFC and the Communications Committee talk about maybe trying to do something like this once we submit a budget to council. I think that it, that it sets the right tone and it asks a lot of those initial questions to get a conversation going. But overall, I'm really happy with this document.
Thank you very much, Jacob. Dana?
Okay, can you hear me now? I'm on a new computer, so you can hear me. Okay. So I, you know, I want to kind of add on and tack on to what Jacob had said. I definitely think, I mean, obviously, we're where we are right now. I definitely think that we have an opportunity to improve the process year over year. And I know that some of the things we were, we were kind of throwing out there at the last meeting was having some sort of liaison and I kind of compared it to what Katie Marie does with Birch Grove. I think she comes once a month or once every two months and kind of gives an update of what's going on, like an even more in detail update than I do on our correspondence or you know what I'm talking about, the, our committee report. So but I think we have an opportunity to impact that a little bit better and what it looks like, I don't know. But having a Board of Ed member attend, you know, especially ramping up to buzzet season. So when we have our first meeting, maybe that's when we have those, that that liaison start. And this is in addition to our normal liaison, you know, but have them start, you know, communicating to the town council. You know, this is what we discussed at this last meeting or these are some upcoming things that we have going on. You know, we have this budget session. We have this round robin with the educators. Something, something to that effect that can kind of help it to, to kind of tack on to that one-pager. Because as Madhu said, it's, you're not going to get three hours worth of information on ten weeks worth of work, you know? So I definitely think there's an opportunity for, for us to impact that. Again, I don't know what that looks like, but just kind of an idea that I'm throwing out there that maybe we can, we can look at considering next go around. But as in Madhu's question, also to go back to his question on my next subject is, I definitely think we need to continue to advocate for, for the budget proposal that we did. I mean, I know that the, that the town manager has proposed it, but I mean, obviously, that the budget we did, you know, took care of the needs of our students and staff and took care of the needs to continue to get us out of this pandemic. I think that we'd be doing our students and staff a gross injustice, cutting anything back further than what we did. I know that a lot of it is out of our hands. However, I do think that as Board of Ed members and advocates for our students and staff, that we definitely need to feel, stand strong and continue to communicate why we feel that we need the support of our full budget. So again, as Ashley had mentioned about the March sixteenth meeting, I definitely think that we need, we need to stand strong on what we put together. And I'm proud of what we put together. I'm proud of online of us approving this unanimously and, again, coming from differing, differing opinions. And it wasn't easy. It wasn't nice. It wasn't pretty. But we got there because everybody, you know, comes from, you know, different, different points of view. So but I definitely think that what we put together really does what our budget's supposed to do and takes care of our students and staff, especially in a pandemic, especially coming out of a pandemic, hopefully, and and moving on into our next year. So that's what I have. And I don't know, Ashley, I'll pen some stuff of what I think maybe might help through next budget season with that liaison idea and throw it to you and Christine and see what you guys think.
Yeah, no, I think that that was, we had a list going from the last meeting of different things that we could try to improve because efficiency is key. You know, we, we really need to just kind of, I mean, we're all volunteers here. So, you know, we, we really, at the end of the day, want to make sure that our point gets across as being a board, but we do want to make sure that they understand why that request is what it, what it's at. And I think FFC having this one-pager at least like helps them go through the, the hours and the weeks of just the discussions that take place at FFC at meetings. And I mean, it's not just the information that was submitted, which by the way, Dr. Willett, did any town council members submit any questions through there? I saw.
They, they, we did have a council member do it, but he did it more directly. They just, I guess they don't like to put it into that form, but, but they, but reached out. And then we did have a, a meeting and talked about everything. And then I posted the answers to questions on the, on the public thing so people could see it too, and on the board thing so everybody could see it. But I did, did have a council member reach out and we did, we sat down, talked about it. And I think that's the kind of thing that really does give opportunity for, you know, getting a broader, broader understanding or broader opportunity than, than say, like a one-hour, you know, public session thing might provide.
No, that's perfect. Thank you very much for doing that. I, like I said, there's obviously questions and you can't just sit there and I don't expect them to just say, oh, this is great. But at the same time, we are aboard. We had these discussions. So it's just a matter of condensing some of our information to get it to them. So whether we do the liaison, we have the sheet summaries, like we just have to come up with a way to make it more efficient. And I think that, you know, this is the second time go around and then you really start looking and you're like, okay, something needs to change. So even just by having maybe our, like having us have a board meeting and having the Board of Ed run it and having, you know, board members being able to answer more questions and so that's more of that availability. You know, there's definitely things that we can discuss and go through to try to make it a more seamless transition of, you know, having our budget go through the process and then transitioning it over to the town council because it is important for them to understand where our needs are. And we can go from there.
If, and just as related but slightly different, if I could just give a compliment to the town staff, you know, our staff is amazing and you know, you know that I think that because I'm always louting how great our staff is. But I also want to put a plug in and say how great the town staff is. You know, we work very well with them. Mike Rosen pays attention. He means, you know, he's watching and thinking and I think he tries to find the best solution that he can within all the constraints he has. So I just want to compliment Mike and, and the town side. You know, I think they're working very hard.
Absolutely. And I will just say that I want neither of your jobs.
Are we getting any sort of advice from, you know, extra or outside professional organizations about ECS funding? Like, you know, are we, are they telling us prepare for a reduction?
You asked one of the most difficult to answer questions.
I'm sure it wasn't easy.
Nandichantala, yeah. I, so you go with the governor. The governor's not hurtness at all. He's, you know, adding a little bit, but you go with certain other people on it and and it doesn't look as favorable, you know? So the thing about that one is it's one of the hardest things to predict. You know, I think that given everything with COVID, I I'm optimistic. I don't, I, I, I'm hoping and thinking we probably won't have a massive slide this year. No, I'm not saying anything about the future, but I think this year will probably be okay and probably get what we can expect. But that is one of the hardest things to answer right now until that budget gets finalized on the state side. So.
So I guess, I guess, we develop our budget, or I guess the town develops the budget based off typically the governor's proposed budget, correct?
They have in the past used the governor's proposed budget as, you know, roughly quote unquote, the thing that they can, you know, say is out there. Sometimes the governor's proposed budget has said something, you know, that we didn't like with ECS. This particular. This particular year, it seems to be saying something a little more favorable. But, you know, generally, we were not sure till, till that's over.
Okay, sorry, I know that was an impossible question to answer.
It's a great, it is one of the best questions, it's just there is, at this point, it's one of those really hard ones to know for sure. But it's a great question, all of the questions are.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you, Madhu. So at this point, I guess. But the point was to kind of send it to town council, but like I said, it's in our board packet, but Dr. Willett, I don't know if I should send it over to.
It's just the official sending of it, I will, we will now officially.
We will officially send.
Now henceforth be officially transferred.
So that is officially going to be sent. Perfect. Let's go to the committee and liaison reports. Obviously, we have the paraprofessional contract, Rini, I don't know, do you want to say anything or can't say anything? I'm not quite sure, but you're starting the secretary's contract coming up, so.
Yeah, I think you just wrapped it all up there for me, actually. In a nutshell.
Let's see, I, FFC, obviously, we have the one pager from you, would you like to add anything else for that?
Nope, there's nothing new other than that, that was our entire meeting, thank you.
Perfect. Okay, um, communications.
So we met at, well, we met last Monday and that's where FFC came up with their document from. Walt and I met briefly tonight, we're going to work on changing the time, it's just a lot for people to actually get there on this night, so we're going to change it. But one of the agenda items that Sophia came up with was understanding the budget process and ideas for improved communications. And that's going to be an ongoing agenda item throughout the communications meetings. So Dana's idea, you know, when she sends them to me, I'm going to bring them there. So if anybody else has any other ideas as well, you know, that's where the brainstorming is going to happen. And that's about it.
Yeah, I know that communications always seems to have a hard time getting any members to attend, no matter what. But I think the timing, I think it definitely would be useful if you could find a time that would actually work for everybody, I think, you know. Obviously, it's hard with Tony, he's overseas right now, so it's, it's a lot. Sophia, did you have something to add to that?
Yes, I will admit Christina's being so kind to me by not calling me out, but I've been struggling getting there. So I'm fessing up to all of you and I apologize.
Like I said, everyone's a volunteer here, so we have.
So sorry, the struggle is real, struggle is real.
It is real, there's jobs, there's kids, there's things that happen. So I completely understand and get it, but I think that you guys can find a time that would work more appropriately for everyone's schedules. I think that would be great. I'm sure Dr. Willett will work on however they technically need to change, get through that. But I think that would definitely be improved. Perfect. Madhu, you have your hand up?
Oh, do I still, I'm sorry. You wanted me to go through curriculum, that's.
I was just going to say, I was unsure if you were ready to go for curriculum and so.
Nope, that's fine, sorry, yeah, the hand was from last time, but, um, so we are in the process of drafting a letter to up that of S-BAX. We discussed the vaccinations of staff and went over the Q and A for the return to five day in person. We spoke about plans to prepare, preparing for mental health outreach for families in need, which, you know, does have a direct correlation to our budget. And we discussed replacing the NWS with IABs, it's not something that's imminent, it's just something that we're looking to do at for the future.
Now, see.
That was it.
Committee, see how much the curriculum's doing? That's quite a bit.
We do a lot, we, we do a lot.
You get a lot done, that's great, no, I love that. Birch Grove, Dana, do you have anything for that?
Um, yes, I'm sorry, I'm referring to my notes here. So obviously, with the unsuitable soils confirmation behind us, the total credit is 1,869,941. We have the postponed items, we're brought back into the project for discussion. So the kill on the stage curtain trees plans and ground covers. We went over the furniture and fixture packages, different things like that. We have coming on our agenda on the 24th, if I'm not mistaken. We would, we're going to be asking to have it added to the agenda if you haven't already heard. But there's a lot of pages for the state change order number three, which includes 15 different change order approval letter items. So as a Board of Ed, it's going to be our opportunity to, you know, consider approving this, to go to the state for reimbursement. The, the committee has already reviewed these items and has already put the stamp on them and had healthy discuss, robust discussions on that. The most important part of all of this is they're, they're finalizing several of the hallways in, in Birch Grove, so by the end of this month, we should have many of the hallways, the second grade hallway, the first grade hallway, I believe, will be fully complete and tight and done. They're on target, on time, under budget and ready to rock and roll for our kids in August of 21. So it's pretty exciting news, but that will be on our plate for, the approvals will be on our plate for the 3/24 meeting. And that's what I have. Oh, last thing, I'm sorry, for any of you who did not make the walkthrough for any reason at all, please let either myself, Dr. Willett, or Katie know, because Eugene has offered to open up the doors for folks who weren't able to go to those walkthroughs, because it's definitely an opportunity to, it's an opportunity that would be missed if you didn't have, you didn't get to go. So please reach out and he has offered to open up those doors for us.
Thank you, Dana, no, that's great. I know definitely Tony will have to touch base, because I'm sure he'll want to see that. Is there a way, Dr. Willett, for those change orders, if you have the documentation, to provide it to board members before that 24th?
Yeah.
We have, we have a, a bridge version, I'm sorry, Dr. Willett, Katie and Antoneta are working on a bridge version for us to provide. Sorry.
Yeah, no, I'll post it as soon as I get it, but a lot of times I, we don't get it until pretty close to the meeting.
Yeah, I'm trying to work with Antoneta and Katie to get something a little sooner. It's something that we talked about from last time, because I know it was overwhelming for us as a team.
No, that'll be perfect if we can get that a little bit before for the board members. If it is going to be on our agenda on the following week, it's, you know, obviously, that Friday we issued to get it out. But if we can get that out to board members, that would be greatly appreciated, because that is a lot of information. And it'd be nice to have the time to review it. Perfect, am I forgetting anybody at this point of time? Okay, everybody looks smiley, so I guess I am good to go. Okay, Chipper's report, I don't really have anything to say. I've just been doing a lot of talking. And so now we can go to the board action, which is the paraprofessional contract. So if I could, I could entertain a motion on this and then we can have that discussion take place.
Rini Bissaw, motion to accept the bargaining unit agreement between the Board of Education and the Talon Para-educational Union, CSEA. SEIU Local 2001 extending from July 1st, 2020 through June 30, 2023.
Jacob Mari. Second.
And Lisa, you can take which one you want, when you write these notes.
It was pretty much. Didn't matter to me.
So at this point, discussion, so I would like to have the board members, I do see Susan's iPad hand is up. And if you want to, you have to wait to public participation on L, so we have to get through our board actions of the K1 and K2. And then we will open that back up to the public, not sure who will hand. But, um, so at this time, I like to open up the discussion to board members in terms of this paraprofessional contract. I don't know, Rini, you would like to say anything at this time before we vote on this to review it?
Um, you know, we spent a good amount of time working with the union on this and I think we came to a mutually acceptable agreement, I think it benefits both parties and you know, I, I, I think it was a good, a good agreement.
Okay, thank you very much, Rini. Let's go to Plort.
I was just going to ask, I feel like the last time I voted on the para contract, we went into executive session to review it, is that?
Well, we.
Part of the process?
No, no, in this case, for, for paraprofessionals, I don't think we were, we do that. When I checked with the legal resource on that, they just suggested putting it in the way we've got it.
Okay. That was my only question, thank you.
Dana?
Thank you, Ashley. No, I, I just want to mimic what Rini said, I definitely think that it was, it was great conversation between us and the pairs. I think that we're doing right by, by all parties involved and it was a lot of hard work, good collaborative work on all capacities. So I just want to thank the team in the BOE and thank the para, the team as well, because the process, the process was interesting, but it went really well.
Okay, thank you, Dana. Jacob?
Thank you to Dr. Willett and negotiations committee for working on this, I know this has been a, a bit of a project that's taken a little while. My question is, were there any like major non-financial changes to this agreement? Besides salaries and benefits that were different from the contract that was in place up until last June?
Well, I, I would let, if the chair wants to respond or I can, whatever the, I just don't want to take any thunder away from.
Dr. Willett, if you have, I don't have the notes right in front of me about, you know, things like that, if you have it handy.
Yeah, I would say one of the biggest things is the sick bank. That's very beneficial, it's not a financial impact really for district, but they, that allows the paraprofessionals to, in a, you know, collegial professional form, really take care of each other if there ends up being, you know, somebody who needs it. The sick bank provides an option for people who are in a tough time. We clarified professional development and training provisions to, you know, give paraprofessionals robust opportunities for training and kind of cleaned up some language that, you know, that sometimes maybe wasn't as beneficial as could have been. And now the, the professional development training provisions treat them very much like teachers with respect to, you know, they're both educators really. So, you know, how they request the PD and can be granted PD. And it's not really a, a, a big financial impact on that one as, as much as it is just an organizational change. So these are some of the two big ones there that, you know, that were part of it. And there was a lot of just, you know, making sure we cross the Ts, dot the Is and, you know, it's a great agreement, the pairs deserve, deserve it. And I think the district did well with it as well. The negotiation team did a great job, as did theirs, and it's just a very positive outcome for us all.
Thank you.
Okay, any other board members at this time for discussion before we do a roll call vote? No? Okay, all those in favor can say aye, any opposed can say nay, or you can abstain. Jacob? If that was an aye, just in case Lisa couldn't hear, because you're kind of muffled.
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Madhu?
Aye.
Sophia?
Aye.
Griffin?
Aye.
Rini?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, therefore, this motion passes unanimously. And so I'm not sure exactly what stuff needs to happen, but I guess you sign the paperwork, Dr. Willett?
That's it, we are now, it's now in force, so there may be some things for us to sign tomorrow, but yes, we're, we're all set, thank you. I think the para, pairs are, they did an awesome job and thank you for approving that and thank you.
Perfect, thank you so much, Dr. Willett. Okay, let's go to the K2, the policy 4120, the electronic devices. And once again, Tony's not here, so you're going to have to steal his thunder there, Dr. Willett.
Yeah, I mean, we all know that would know that, that Mr. Holt brings a spirit and giddiness to policy that I cannot possibly replicate, but I will do my best. No, so this is, we had our first read, essentially, this is an updating of the district computer systems and electronic communications policy for employees. It, it just updates the technology, because some of the older language didn't include some of the newest stuff. And it also highlights the provision that really there isn't any expectation of personal privacy when you're talking about using any kind of district equipment, which is consistent with industry, you know. No one using industry, you know, in any kind of company, any machines, any software, any, any email, any of that. It's all work related and it should remain work related. So this just, again, makes that extremely clear and codifies it in policy and catches the policy up to the current technology and age. Also, along with it, the policy is the board's approval and then the regulation is usually written as an expansion of policy. I'm including the regulation here. Obviously, we would clean up any of the extra language, because you'll notice in some places it says, if you don't have a social media policy, include this bullet. And we'll probably include that bullet anyway, but we do have a social media policy, probably on the radar for that, that's coming to us soon. But in this case, it just again, updates it, you know, and makes it extremely clear what, you know, what we're talking about when we say that we're going to, you know, be monitoring and that, you know, you know, what, what is the process, if they have a problem, how do they resolve it? That's what a regulation usually will go into, also explanations as to why we're doing this. You know, what privacy issues are a part of it that we're trying to be mindful of, what prohibited uses of that technology are, so that there's a very clear definition. You know, for instance, you cannot send any form of slanderous harassing, threatening or intimidating messages at any time to any person. I wish that, you know, in life, 99% of people understand this, 1%, they may need a little bit of help understanding these kinds of things and these policies sometimes are written to make sure that that 1%, you know, is held accountable, but also is very clearly noticed that, that these things need to be adhered to and thought about. And finally, I'll just kind of scoot to the end here. There's a notice of electronic monitoring that we'll be posting in all of the mail rooms and in all other areas that we would do postings. And this also is yet another way of noticing people. Hey, you got to pay attention to, you know, to our regulations, to, to our board policies. You cannot violate our acceptable use for these technologies. So, you know, also highlights the, the legal section that gives us that authority and so on. So that's basically it, as soon as we get the nod by the Board of Education, we will make the final tweaks on this and, and move it forward. One thing that I did here is that, you know, some of it where it refers to board, it also, you know, also should say, to some extent, Talon Public Schools, because it's not, the person sometimes executing this is not a, a board member per se, it's a Talon Public School staff member. So where it makes sense, we would be putting, you know, Talon Public School administration in versus a board representative, because a board representative won't be doing a search of, of email for, you know, an authority that might be coming and asking for it, it would be a, a staff member. So some of that, we might have to tweak for final language, but that would be the only real tweak from here, is cleaning that up and, and publishing.
So can we not vote on that then, if we need to change the language on this?
Well, you can, you can vote on it, just understanding that, you know, something that doesn't make sense, you know, if it has Talon Board Representative. The language that is part, this is part of boilerplate, but that when I talked to them, they, they also said, yeah, we just kind of had that in there. We expect you to put public school in or something to that nature, so.
We have the motion, we can add that into somehow.
You can say where appropriate, change references to board to public school staff, you know, where, you know, where appropriate. And we'll go through, and some places it is appropriate to say, this is a board policy. But again, when you're having somebody who's going to search something, it's not going to be one of you probably. Well, I mean, definitely, you know, it would be staff. So maybe we just make sure that, that appropriately listed them.
Because I'm just looking at the proposed motion, because this is our board action, so I would need an actual motion, so we can have board members discussion and then we can take a vote. So motion to approve the changes modification updates the policy regarding employee use of districts, computer systems and electronic communications. How about we motion to. Um how about we motion to approve the changes and also somehow add in where appropriately needed. Um, you know, however you.
Yeah, I'll write that up real quick. I'll make a little note of it here.
Okay.
Well, you're, if there's any other objections, they can, people can throw it out there now and I'll put this this in some language for us. Changes modifications and updates to policy.
That way we could change that and then um we can vote on this and get this going. I just wanna make sure that we're doing this and covering us for that change of language. I hear you typing and I don't see anything changing.
I know. It's covered. It's covered. I'm gonna have to screw up everybody's screen now in order to do that. Sorry. So here it comes. Um chips and. Uh motion for the changes modifications and updates to policy regarding employee use of district computer systems and electronic communications and make any necessary changes of board to public school staff where necessary.
Perfect. Therefore, I will entertain this motion that is on our screen. So if anybody would like to.
Jacob Mari, I move to approve the changes, modifications and updates to the policy regarding employee use of the district computer systems and electronic communications and make any changes that's of board to public school staff where necessary.
Madhu, Renutantala, second?
Hey, at this time, would um any board members have any other um discussion that they would like to take place upon this before we vote on it? Going once, going twice, we will do a roll call vote. Um anyone who can approve it and say aye, or you can my kid is back here, my kid over here. Don't like, you say nay, or you can abstain from the vote. Um at this point, let's, Dr. Willett, stop changing everything.
I'm sorry.
On people.
All right, I got it.
One more thing.
Stop touching things.
Okay, uh Plord?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Madhu?
Aye.
Sophia?
Aye.
Griffin?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Rini?
Aye.
I'm a aye as well, therefore this motion passes unanimously and we will update this policy of the uh forty forty-one twenty. Let's move on to the public participation. There it will be a two-minute time limit and it has to be two items on this agenda. We will have Jacob be the timer and he will give you a visual on your thirty seconds and also let you know when you have the thirty seconds left verbally. Um at this point, if the public wants to raise their hand, I will call on you. And like I said, just list your name and your address and then you'll have two minutes. Susan's iPad.
Hi, I'm Susan Diamond. I'm on fifty-two Glen Drive here in Talon. Um first of all, I wanna say thank you for the peer educators' contract revising it and putting it through. I appreciate that. I am one of them. Um actually, Ashley, you're the first one I met when I started my job there at TIS. And the second thing I wanted to add was what Dana was talking about. Um Dana, when you were talking about online learning, I personally can say that on both parts, it's good and beneficial for the children. But I personally like it more in person, sitting next to the child and working with them with manipulatives. And it's been very uh kind of flexible. We had to be at home and use magnets and do a lot of vocal and do a lot of reading. And it's been a little bit harder doing it at home and I understand for the parents, but I just wanted to say that I know that I can't wait till everybody's back into the school and then working with the small groups or individually as needed. So I just wanna put my input as there since I do work at the TIS and I am a parent educator. So thank you for the contract. And I see both sides, but I kind of prefer all in person. And I feel better now that I've had my shots, so my vaccine, so I feel better about that. So that's just what I wanted to add. Thank you. Thank you.
That's exciting. Thank you very much, Susan.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I I do like hearing that the teachers are starting to get the vaccinations, even though we have our, what is it, March sixteenth or seventeenth, March seventeen?
Seventeen.
So, you know, it's it is nice to hear that. Everyone's getting there. So thank you very much for that, Susan. And we will go to Liz Costa next.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for doing this. And I just wanna say thank you very much for approving the Paris contract. Very thrilled by that. Thank you again.
And your address, Liz. Come on.
Dude, you think I'm a rookie? Fifty-four Josiah Lane.
Perfect. Thank you. Anyone else at this time would like to have two minutes to speak? Going once, going twice. Okay, now we will move on to the points of information. Um any board members at this time would like to say anything? It's like crickets here. Dana?
All right, I will break up the chirp chirp. Uh first of all, thank you to to Ms. Costa and Ms. Diamond for, you know, the acknowledgement of the para contract. Um, you know, I'm proud of the work that we did as a team on all sides. Um and Ms. Diamond, I do appreciate um your point of view because I don't disagree. I I definitely think that our educators and our pair educators and our administrators want those kids right next to them, a hundred and fifty percent. I was just trying to shed some light on some folks that are the remote learners that can't get back into the classroom for one reason or another. And um seeing the the bond and in the small little groups and the the amazing work that our pairs are doing and our special educators and our and our educators are doing. I I just wanted to make sure that I highlighted that as well. Um, nothing's gonna replace, like you said, that one-on-one time or that group time where you're doing the manipulated manipulatives and you're in person. And it is very hard to go through that screen. Um again, uh you're all, you know, angels and and are phenomenal at what you do and there's no training for being in this pandemic and executing what we're expecting our pair educators and our educators and our administrative staff, even our students, to do and parents for trying to figure it all out. Um, so I definitely appreciate um you you um expressing your point of view. I I couldn't uh agree with you more. And thank you for what you do.
Yeah, but I have to say with Dana, for Dana, I mean, honestly, being a parent in the school system, I used to just do that for something when my work gets slow and the little times and I loved it. There are little bonds that you do have with those kids and, you know. I absolutely loved it. And that was one of the sad things. I was like, well, I'm not gonna be able to work in the school, but I'll be on the board event. Okay, you know. So I kinda waited and I was like, okay, I could do that because it was only there. But I mean, I remember when Sue's first day, she came in and she was ready to go and she's still hitting the floor running with those kids. And it's nice to see because they really do. And it, if you go and you're substituted at a different school and then you see them as they progress, it really is neat because then you're like, you know, you were part of that foundation that you helped that that student read and now they're reading chapter books, you know. So there is that progression and, you know, with the remote, it's gotta be just difficult on everybody. So i- it's hard. It's a, we're in a pandemic and what are you gonna do, you know? So it's everyone trying their best. That's at the end of the day. That's what we're trying to do. Uh Griffin?
Thank you, Ashley. Um I just wanted to also um thank all of our pair educators. I know this has been a long time getting your contract finalized, so I'm glad it seems that everybody's happy. And I also wanted to just um comment, um Dr. Willett and to your high school staff and admin. Um I'm thrilled to hear about all of the end of the year senior activities. Um I'm sure nobody will forget, you know, how how vocal I was last year and I'm just, I'm really excited that we've um taken the time to figure out what we can do for the um class of twenty twenty-one. And it sounds like there's gonna be some really great events. Um so I look forward to hearing more about it and hopefully seeing some pictures when the time comes. So I just wanted to thank you and uh Summer and Alexandra. I hope uh you enjoy, you know, the last few months of your high school career. So thank you.
Griffin was ready to pass the torch. So Sophia, don't you have a senior? She was ready to say.
That's right. It was needed. That was gonna be all you, but it sounds like they've got it under control.
She was ready though. She was ready. She was like, okay, you have a seizure. There you go. Passion the torch, but hopefully we won't need any of that and we can go back to a little bit normal of a ceremony. Um anyone else at this time? No? Okay, look at, everyone's smiling though. I love smiley. This is great. See, smiles are fantastic. So um in terms of the future and the new business, I believe we pretty much went on what was happening last um meeting with our ideas of where we're gonna take our agendas and what we're gonna discuss and do. And we just gotta have time to put those on there and get there. Um anyone have anything else? Because I will um entertain a motion for adjournment.
Dana Felven, uh to make a motion to adjourn at eight forty-two P M.
Madhu, Renutantala, second?
Geez, Madhu is like, he's ready to go. He didn't even wait for the motion.
I was surprised at what time it was. I couldn't even get it out.
The mic cut out and I thought she was done talking. So I was like, okay, you know.
Dude's like, I'm just.
Well, just so I didn't also just jump over Jacob again, you know?
It's okay, Lisa can can figure out who who says what at what time. So at this time, um we will do a roll call vote. So Plord?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Sophia?
Aye.
Rini?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Griffin?
Aye.
Madhu?
Aye.
I'm a aye as well, therefore we will end our meeting at eight forty-three. Look at that. It's so nice having a great team that works together and just a good, perfect. Love it. And smiles. Look at all the smiles. I can't, I'm telling you, it makes my night. Smiles.
I don't know what to do with myself now.